Could I all ask you to check your phones, to make sure they're switched off or to silent? And could I ask you to make sure councillors, that your card is firmly in, so that we can hear you for the webcast? Can I just remind the public that this is a meeting in public, not a public meeting? We welcome hearing from you at public speaking, but apart from that, please, we'd ask you not to join in the discussion. The officers we have tonight, there's certainly one newish face, I wouldn't say new, so if one of you, I gather if one of you puts the microphone on, we can actually see you. See if it works. Oh, well, we've still got the phone. Is it working? Right. So, on my far right is Lewis Jones from the Legal Department, Jeanette Walsh, the interim head of Development Control, Flo Taylor, who are principal planning officer, am I giving you your full weight? Rachel Kellis, the same, and Louise Jandell, who is the area team leader for Southern and Western. So, shall we move on then, please, straight away to the business of the meeting? The minutes, can we confirm the minutes of the meeting that were held on the 25th of October 2017? They've been laid on the table. Emma, apologies for absence and declarations of substitutes, please.
We have apologies from councillors Jim Edwards, Christian Hesse, Simon Inchbold, Carol King, and Robert Knowles.
Thank you very much. And are there any declarations of interest?
None before the meeting, but there will be a non pecuniary interest from Hazemere Town Council.
Are there any other interests that anyone wishes to declare? In that case, questions from the public, Emma, have we received any?
None received, Chairman.
Sorry. Jeanette, are there any relevant updates that you wish to give us? Thank you very much. Which takes us straight on then, to the application for planning permission. In the case of site inspection being necessary, it will be held on Tuesday, the 2nd of January, doesn't make the year fly by, doesn't it, when you see it like that? So, moving on then, to the first item on the agenda, it is subject to public speaking, it's A1 WA 2017 1635, the site of Hindhead Furnishing Warehouse, Hill Road, Hindhead. So, Rachel, you're going to introduce this, thank you.
Yes, thank you. So, the proposal for consideration tonight is for the erection of some free dwellings together with associated access parking and landscaping. You've got that location plan outlined in red for you on the screen, you'll see it's just to the western or southwest side of Hill Road. And you'll note it's quite closely surrounded by other residential properties. Here, a similar view, an aerial view this time of the site. This is the application site outlined, you have the arrow just in the centre, and this is the access point and the passage which leads on to Hill Road. Again, I'll just point out the proximity of the site to nearing residential dwellings, right as close as an example of more recent development, and that's on the corner just here. You've got properties running onto Hill Road, and on all four sides. Taking now to the existing site photographs, those of you who know the site will recall that it was previously occupied by the furnishing warehouse storage building on site, that has since been demolished in connection with the previous permission. So, what you see is the hoarding at the front of the site, you've got an arrows on the map just below, which shows you where that was taken from. This is the site frontage, this is the entrance, and as you can see, it's got the hoarding across it at the moment, and that's between two existing residential properties. Turning to site two, or photograph two for you, this is taken from within the site, looking towards right as close, you'll see it's sort of backland at the moment, quite overgrown, and in close proximity to those residential dwellings. These are some further views for you within the site, primarily looking towards the northern boundary, and that's all taken from that rear portion of the site just here. Photo number two is looking towards the accessway, you can just about see in the background the access leading towards Hill Road. This building just here, for context, runs directly on to the road. Turning to the proposal itself, at this point, I will mention the previous permission, which you may well be aware of from reading your agenda, there is an existing permission on site for four dwellings, and I'll provide a comparison plan of that in due course. First of all, at the front of the building, we have a building, two-storey building containing two flats, one upper, one ground floor. There's also an accessway under here, which provides your vehicular access into the site, and the houses at the rear. You'll note the two parking spaces for those dwellings which run directly onto the highway. Also part of the previously permitted scheme is this building just here, there's a pair of semi-detached properties, again, two-storey, you'll note front of dormer windows, it's a shallow-style building, both of those are two-bedroom properties. Turning to the layout, you've got two parking spaces for the first of those dwellings just here on the northern boundary, and for the other property just here to the south, two spaces again. For both of those two-bedroom properties, the parking requirement is two parking spaces each, which is provided just there. The new element of the proposal, not the subject of the previous permission, is the bungalow, that's this building just here. You'll see, relative to the other properties, it is set within quite a generous plot, you'll note the garden area around it. That's a two-bedroom bungalow, you'll see one of the parking spaces here, and it also includes an integral garage, which you'll see from the floor plan in just a moment, which is in just here. So, that gives you the total, the two parking spaces required for that property. You also note you've got some turning space as well here for cars to manoeuvre. Turning to the proposed elevations, this looks at the front of the site, this is the front building containing two flats that you'd see, and this is the building up front on to Hill Road itself, and a two-storey building with that accessway passing through, with a dormer feature within the roof, and you'll note the staggered roof form there. The map up below just simply shows you where that angle was taken from, and this is one of the side elevations. This gives you a section for the proposed elevations across the rear of the site, so you can see both the proposed bungalow with pitched roof just here, and the two previously approved semi-detached properties on the right-hand side. Both of those would sit towards the rear of the application site. Here, you can see that previously mentioned integral garage, which would serve the bungalow, and you'll note the shallow features and chimney which sit on the proposed semi-detached This is the floor plan and roof plan for the proposed bungalow. Again, you'll note it's got two bedrooms, living room and entrance out to the garden area, and you'll note the integral garage. As mentioned, this gives you a comparison of the previously approved block plan, and what we have before us tonight. This is the previously approved scheme, you'll see the main difference between this scheme and one you've got before you is firstly the bungalow, which includes an additional portion of land, sorry, to that which was the subject of the previous approval. You'll also notice a slight change to the parking layout, previously you had four cars here, all in a tandem parking arrangement, that's now been split up to provide the access to the additional site, and those two parking spaces are now located to the side of the semi-detached properties, rather than alongside the other two at the front. That aside, the bulk and form of the two previous blocks remain the same. What might also be helpful to show you on this previously approved block plan is you've got an outline here, which you should just about be able to make out, and that's of the Hindhead Furnishing Warehouse building that was on-site previously. Now, that has already been demolished, and that provides the implementation of that previous permission, which could still go ahead and be implemented, should the applicant choose to do so. The scheme before you tonight provides an alternative scheme to that, which provides the additional dwelling. What you can also see here is that actually the housing block to the front does sit further forward in the street scene compared to the previous building, that's dashed line just Take you through the determining issues for the application tonight, the matters of principle and technical opinion are, the planning history and differences with the previous proposal. To note here, you do have a scheme before you for five dwellings, however, the previous permission for four dwellings is highly material, and also needs to be taken account of in reaching a decision. Turning to the housing mix, the proposal would provide smaller units between one and two bedrooms, which is considered generally compliant with policy H4 and the Sma requirements. In terms of housing land supply, in comparison to the previous scheme, there's a difference of one, not a significant factor either way, but nonetheless, there is a small contribution there to housing land supply. Towards highway safety and parking, the proposal would meet in full with council's parking guidelines, as I pointed out to you on the layout plan previously, where all those spaces would sit for their respective dwellings, and as I say, that is in full compliance with the council standards. It has also been reviewed by the County Highway Authority, who have raised no objections to the proposal, subject to relevant conditions. There will be no likely effect on the SPA, which is mentioned for you there. Turning to matters of judgment, lay our impact on visual amenity, at this point, I'll speak briefly about the Hazemere Design Statement, so the key change in this is the bungalow at the back, and the focus of both the design statement and also the relevant policies in the local plan are very much about the impact on the street scene, and where you are going to have development of gardens area to the rear, focusing on providing sufficient amenity space for that dwelling. In that respect, you'll note that there is a good amount of amenity space relative to that scheme that has been permitted previously. Turning to the cycle and bin storage, again, the key change in this respect to this application is the proposed bungalow, and there is space within that plot to provide for cycle and bin storage. In respect of the impact on residential amenity, primarily turning to the bungalow in single-story form of the building, also satisfied that that element of the scheme would not be harmful to the amenities of neighbouring occupiers, and in respect to the previously approved scheme, clearly a previous assessment has been undertaken in some detail, in terms of the impact of the other two blocks under consideration. Looking at the standard of accommodation, again, I'm focusing on the bungalow, that would meet the relevant space standards, and will provide adequate light and outlook to the proposed and future occupants. Before I take you to the recommendation, there is an additional update in for this item, which hopefully you've got before you, it's an amendment to the wording of condition 11, and that's following discussion with the County Highway Authority, to make sure that that's appropriate to the site layout. What it does is it retains the parking and turning areas, it requires them to be provided and to be maintained thereafter. The change from that is that you'll see the requirement to enter and leave the site in forward gear has been removed, and that reflects the fact that the two parking spaces at the front, I might just jump back to the plan to show you at this point, there are two spaces just here which do go directly on to Hill Road, and I'm sure you can see here that there wouldn't be space for them to turn around within the site before exiting out. So, the points that the County Highway Authority make in recommending that condition are, firstly, to look at the previous use of the site, the previous use of the site was in a warehouse and storage use, which you would expect also quite larger vehicles to be entering the site, would be in a similar position in terms of having to reverse back out on to that road, so consideration does need to be given to the law for use of the site, and what might come forward on the site if indeed a residential scheme does not come forward. And the other point in that respect is to, the nature of the road, it is a residential road, and in regards to the speed along that road, the County Highway Authority consider it acceptable for those two spaces to be able to reverse on to that road. However, the Highway Authority have reviewed the remainder of the layout, and for the remainder of the cars, it would be possible to enter and leave the site in a forward gear. So, that's the explanation behind that change to the condition. And noting, having regards to that change to condition 11, I'll take you to the update sheet, or to the recommendation, and that's set out for you on page 23. So, the recommendation is that permission be granted, subject to the following conditions, to include the amendment to condition 11. Thank you.
Thank you, Rachel. As I said earlier, this is subject to public speaking, so could I ask Mr Malcolm Carter to come forward first of all, please, speak on behalf of the town council? Thank you. I think you know the drill. Thank you. Four minutes from when you start speaking.
I speak on behalf of Hazemere Town Council regarding the proposed further development of the land known as Beacon Hill Furnishing Warehouse. The town council objects to the further development of the site for three reasons. Our first reason is, one, that this application cannot be considered without the plans of the granted application 2014/1388. The original application has clear areas of parking, which have now been changed, the new design, I have to say, was not available to Hazemere Town Council at the time of its decision-making. The access to this site is through a three-metre-wide tunnel, under the front new build, and it would appear that the new combined plan means that there is no easy turning ability for cars within the site. My second reason is that this is an overdevelopment of a very small site. This site is part of the original garden of West Cottage, and consequently sits between properties on all four sides, with further overlooking from the new build to the north. The older housing in the vicinity of this site is already quite dense, and this proposal will create a new level of density in the village. My third reason is the access to Hill Road. There is therefore every chance that vehicles will reverse out on to Hill Road. User evidence says that cars are parked, double-parked all day, with particular issues in the evenings and weekends, and this means that cars leaving this proposed site will create a hazard as they try to leave. Our view is that whilst there is a token parking being shown here, the likelihood is that residents will opt for street parking, to avoid probability of being locked into the site, or indeed the hazard of reversing out. Hill Road is already a parking site for all the older properties that have no parking facilities, it is quite normal for that to experience one carriageway width only in the evenings and weekends for this length of road. And finally, Beacon Hill Village has suffered 15 new developments over recent years without parking. This committee has an opportunity to halting this by refusing this application on justifiable grounds. To recent appeals, the recent inspector has highlighted concern over parking facilities in this village, and that infills such as this create unacceptable loss of outlook. As a town council, we've already asked the head of planning at Waverley to visit this village urgently, and see firsthand the results of their planning decisions. Accepting this development will be another signal to developers that there is no control over the shaping of this village.
Thank you, Mr Carter. Could I now ask Mr Gordon Kerr to come along and speak, and you are a supporter of the scheme? Once again, you'll have four minutes from when you start speaking, Mr Kerr.
Chair, committee members, our application is before you tonight fundamentally because national planning policy, having a presumption in favour of sustainable development, allows it to be so. More specifically, however, we speak in support of the proposals in order to emphasise the point that they have been developed in close consultation with the planning department, in order to ensure that they meet not only the broader objectives of sustainable development, but also more detailed local policy issues, such that the department is able to support the proposals with a recommendation for approval. Notwithstanding the full application description, the officers' report makes clear that all but the proposed additional bungalow is a subject of an existing exstant approval, which is accepted to have been safeguarded in perpetuity by virtue of the demolition of existing buildings and the clearance of the site in readiness for development. It is our understanding, therefore, that the issue to be determined is whether the additional bungalow will comply with policy in relation to the surrounding environment and its infrastructure, which for these purposes may be deemed to include the previously approved development. On the advice received from your officers, and in the light of their recommendation, we strongly believe that it will comply in all respects. Thank you for the opportunity to address you this evening.
Thank you very much, Mr Kerr. Members, open to you, but I think Mr Isherwood will go first, as he called the matter in.
Thanks, Chairman. Yes, I did call the matter in, as one of the Hindhead councillors. I don't disagree with the fact that this is a site where development can take place, but as we see here, the site would be dominated by buildings and hard standings. This application, in my view, and although the officers have heard my views beforehand and have addressed part of them, the application would conflict with the Hazemere Design Statement, in my view. It states that design should respect and be sympathetic to the character and immediate architectural surroundings in terms of pattern, scale, material, and form. The MPPF states that planning should seek to secure a good standard of amenity for all, existing and future occupants of the land and the buildings. My contention is that this is not so. While we are not obliged to follow the national technical standards for housing at this time, hopefully that will come in our local plan part two, the units that we're looking at here, two are quite considerably below the standard that we would seek in future, although at the moment, they are totally legal, two are just on and ones above. The car's going to dominate this particular scene, manoeuvring on-site, well, excuse me, Hill Road, Grove Road, and Beacon Hill Road are double-part, both sides of the road have cars there day and night. Hill Road leads the school, just 100 yards up the hill there, 250 pupils, many of them actually walk, they're not all driven in Chelsea tractors, many of them walk school. Here we have two cars that are going to reverse across the pavement, on to a road, with cars that are parked left and right. I do not think that is really a safe manoeuvring area. The planning history shows that 2014 was, full permission was granted, and 2015 0933 for seven was refused, and in 2015 1868 for six was refused, and the appeal was dismissed. Here we have something else that's different. The bungalow is there, on the plan. Where are we going to put the wheelie bins? Can't quite see that on this plan, because just about all the amenity space of the two flats would cover up, and where are they collected? From the pavement. So, we have quite a few wheelie bins trotting out there, and food bins also. The footprint of the bungalow, to me, seems to be the same or greater than the two semis. I know it's two stories, but there we are. 14 homes, or maybe even 19 homes, and that's about the number who have objected to this application from the area, will overlook the site. The amenity space for the majority other than the bungalow is totally inadequate, and the report says it's okay on balance, because we've got a park, recreation ground, few metres away, probably 200, 250 metres, I don't really know. And when I look at the bungalow, it really is quite featureless, I don't see any great architectural merit in that. To me, it's an overdevelopment of the site, it really is cramped, I do not accept it as part of Hindhead, Beacon Hill. Therefore, I can't support this application. Thanks, Jim.
Thank you, councillor Isherwood. Could we have, Rachel, please, the plan of what has already got permission next to the plan that we're considering tonight? That's right, because I think it's important that we do understand what's already got permission on the site before, you know, we make a decision, as long as we know what we're looking at, then I think we can make a fair decision. Councillors? councillor Malaner?
Thank you very much, Chairman. Yes, the parking issue, do I take it that the existing permission has basically accepted all the points about parking, and are we not therefore somewhat stuck with it?
Rachel, actually, explain.
Yeah, thank you for the question. So, this, in terms of the parking spaces for the houses at the back, in terms of those four tandem spaces, yes, that's already got approval, and similarly, the two spaces at the front, and that particular issue about entry on to Hill Road, that also has permission. I would advise you that the parking standards are met in full, in terms of our requirements, and that's both for the units that have already been permitted, and also the bungalow that's proposed. Thank you.
Wish to come up? Yes, I've assumed you hadn't finished, councillor Malaner.
Well, all I can say is that I'm sorry that is the case. If this was a new application, I think I would have found the arguments against those parking standards being met quite strong, because the practicalities are not very impressive. I think as far as the new build is concerned, or the new build relative to the approved application, the only thing which I think one can object to is, as councillor Isherwood said, the rather featureless nature of the bungalow. And one thing this committee has done successfully in the past is to accept the principle of development, but ask the developer to come back with something better, and I for one would be prepared to do that on this occasion. The Hazemere Design Statement is there for a purpose, and I would like to see it used, so I too will not be supporting this.
Thank you, councillor Malaner. councillor Adams, and then councillor Round, thank you.
Thanks, Chairman. I should know this, but I don't. On the parking standards, what size are the spaces, length and width? I mean, because it obviously makes a difference, and particularly in this case, whether they just accommodate smart cars, or whether they accommodate large saloons.
Yes, sorry, Rachel, do carry on.
Yeah, thank you. So, the parking space required dimensions are a minimum of 2.4, that's the width of the space by 4.8 in this direction. The actual, I'm assuming that the main concern is about these spaces at the front of the site, and they go, the measurement from here to the pavement area is five metres, so slightly in excess of that. Main thing that achieves is that it wouldn't be necessary, assuming your car fits in that standard space, to overhang the pavement and just leave that space clear. Hope that's helpful.
Do you wish to come back, councillor Adams? No? councillor Round?
Thank you, Malaner. And I got the same problem, I think, in both the applications, the former one during the Ansiam regime, and the current one, I find difficult to see how two of the cars would actually get out. Cars four and six in the top diagram, and...
I don't mean to interrupt, but we're not looking at that application, that's the previously approved one.
Okay, but the present application, the vehicles to the left, left of that one, well, the two that are on the left-hand side, how would they get out if there's someone behind I mean, it doesn't look as if there's space for the, if you look at the two between the top brown set and the new bungalow, for one to get out, the forward one to escape, would he have to pass the one behind him, and is there the width? It doesn't look like it. I can't think of anything worse than being boxed in by your neighbour, who might be out, and unable to move his motor.
Thank you, I'll get the officers to come back on that.
Does look a squash, thank you.
Yeah, can I just remind you, we lost an appeal where we put in very strongly that we disapproved for tandem parking, but the inspector didn't think there was anything wrong with tandem parking, so I'll get the officers to explain this one for you, councillor Round.
Thank you, Chairman, and yes, my comments aren't a lot different from that. You have got a number of spaces where you've got two spaces in tandem, so it clearly does require some cooperation between occupants of that unit, but they would all be allocated to an individual unit. So, for example, this semi-detached property here, these two spaces would be allocated
So for example, this semi-detached property here, these two spaces would be allocated to that dwelling, so it wouldn't be the case that you'd need your neighbour to go and move the car, albeit another member of your family, you may do. So there is some cooperation there. What I would add is that we do have permissions where we do accept tandem parking of two cars, the part at which we have drawn a line is where there's three in tandem. A few turning spaces are pointed out, and I might just take you back at this point to the comparison plan. You may well come to the view that you do have more turning space in this scheme than you have got on the previous one just by dividing up those areas of tandem parking here. So you've got this actual accessway which takes you through into the entrance of the site, which it's for you to consider whether that's preferable to the previous one, but would also remind you that we have got the county highways view on matter. Thank you.
Does anybody else wish to come back or make a comment? councillor Piper?
Thank you, madam chairman, not to be left out. I just have to say that I concur with all these comments that have been made. My biggest concern is actually with regard to the two parking spaces that are by Hill Road, but I accept that permission for those parking spaces has already been granted. But the fact that reversing out of there with parked cars, there will be no sightlines, especially with, as councillor Isherwood was saying, children walking to school. But I also think that the design of the new bungalow is boring. It has no character at all and is against the Hazemere Design Statement. It doesn't add anything to the area.
Thank you, councillor Public. councillor Round, do you wish to come back?
Thank you, yes, very briefly. I think as one of my colleagues has mentioned a few moments ago, that it does look as if this is an attempt to, well, it is, squash one more building in, and maybe the developer should look afresh at this entire site, which perhaps might even accommodate the same number of dwellings, but somewhat better laid out.
Thank you, councillor Round. councillor Isherwood, do you wish to come back?
Yes, indeed. I'd just like to see the front building, please, if you just put it on the screen, a comment that one of my colleagues made. So the parking is right in front of the front door, is that correct?
Yeah, that's got permission.
And that has permission, so. Having said what I've said, we are hoist, I think, in that finding a reason for refusal is nigh impossible. I regret to say that, but go back to the scheme is better than what we have, despite the lack of amenity space for the other buildings. My view sadly is that the officers' case cannot be gone against. I regret to say that, but from my personal point of view, I think this is not a good scheme. I think the amenities spaced and everything else is lacking for the majority other than the bungalow. But beyond that, the poor design of the bungalow is not really a reason for refusal, so I regret my change of heart.
Thank you, councillor Isherwood. That saves me saying most of what I was going to say. We are very constrained by the fact that there is a previous permission, and we have to be very careful, you know, how we make this decision. We certainly can't refuse it on something that's already been granted, it just would be unreasonable. So if anybody else, or nobody else wishes to speak, either member or officer, we'll move straight. councillor Round?
Well, yes, I accept what you say, of course, but this is changing the nature of the previous application as well, isn't it, regarding the parking? So we have to comment on it.
I'll get the officer to explain that, but no, I mean, you know, we've got principles that have been approved and we can't change those, but Rachel will probably explain it better.
Yes, to an extent, you're correct to have a look at whether Haullab compared the changed parking layout to what was approved previously. I suppose a question for you to consider is whether this layout here, however, is worse than what you've approved previously. And it comes back to the point as to whether you want the four spaces quite close together here or actually slightly more spread out as you've got here. That's the key difference. It's open to you to obviously come to a conclusion as to whether that's more or less harmful than what's previously approved.
I think what we're all saying is we don't really want to start from here, but I'm afraid we have no choice. councillor Malina?
Sorry, I'd like some clarification, please. Didn't quite understand councillor Isherwood's second contribution. As far as I'm concerned, I've always understood that the design of the new element is something we can comment on, and if we don't like it, we can say no to, go back and do it again as a perfectly valid reason for refusal. Or have I got something wrong?
I think you've got something wrong, but I'll ask the, I'll get the officers again to explain. I would have thought that was a very weak reason for, if that's the only reason we can find for refusal.
Thank you, yes. I'll take you to the elevations of the bungalow at this point, which seem relevant. You are quite entitled to come to view on the design of that bungalow in its own right and its acceptability, but what I would caution you is to consider its location, which is in a backland location, and its potential views into the site are obviously very limited at that point. The areas in which we have the strongest case, I would advise in terms of design, are particularly on the site frontage, particularly if you read Hazemere Design Statement, there's a lot of discussion and a lot of focus in there about the impact on the street scene and the prevailing character of the area. You can look at factors like density, but you clearly have to bear in mind this approval above, which is of a much higher density than what you have approved just here. And having a look at some of the principles it talks about, it talks about preserving the factors like the roof, the roof just there, you'll see it's a pitched roof, it's the sort of design you do see elsewhere. You have got some variety of materials on here, a door and a porch, so it's for you to come to view, but the view to consider is whether that in its own is so materially harmful as to warrant refusal, having regard to its position and visibility of it. Thank you.
Thank you, members. I think we can probably move to the recommendation. So the recommendation is slightly changed, that subject to conditions one to 10, the revised condition 11, which is on your update sheet, the other conditions 12, 13, and the informatives one to eight, that permission be granted. Can I see all those, please, in favour of granting permission?
One, two, three, four.
And can I see those who are against granting? Thank you. In that case, permission is granted. Thank you very much, indeed. Now, members, we're expecting to move on to A2, but there is some late news on this application, and we have an unusual decision to make here. So I'm going to get the officers, I think Flo is going to start off, and Jeanette to explain the dilemma we have with this particular application this evening, and then take a view on what we decide to do with it. So Flo, if you'd like to begin, that would be fine. Thank you.
Thank you. Officers have today received an updated consultation response from the Surrey Wildlife Trust following the submission of additional information from the applicant. The current information submitted in respect of bats does not follow best practice guidance and appears to have been carried out by someone without the necessary bat licence from Natural England. The report does not provide justification for why a confirmed active bat roost of at least two species in 2011 would have negligible potential to host active roosts in 2017 when the presence of potential bat roost features present in the fabric of the building have not significantly changed. Surrey Wildlife Trust consider that prior to the determination of the application, the applicant should be required to submit an appropriately detailed bat survey report undertaken by a suitably qualified ecologist in line with best practice guidance in order to avoid contravention of protected species legislation. Circular O6 2005 states that it is essential that the presence or otherwise of protected species and the extent that they may be affected by the proposed development is established before planning permission is granted. The planning authority must have regard to the requirements of the habitats directive so far as they may be affected by the exercise of those functions. In the absence of an appropriate survey, there is not sufficient information on which to base a decision as set out in the habitat regulations. Without the required information, members cannot be sure that the applicant will be able to maintain the population at favourable condition status as the presence and status of roosts is not known and therefore appropriate avoidance, mitigation and compensation cannot be determined. As such, if members are minded to approve the application, they cannot do so before this issue is resolved. If members are minded to approve, it is recommended that members defer the item in order for the applicants to provide the required information to seek to resolve this issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Flo. Do you wish to add anything at this stage, Jeanette? No. So, members, I think that was very, very clear. I hope it was very clear. We cannot approve this application, we can refuse it or we can defer it, but we, our hands are tied at the moment in terms of having a full debate and deciding whether to approve it or whether to refuse it. So I'm really in your hands if we could perhaps see, take a vote on this. How many, all those in favour of a deferral, how many people do we have for a deferral?
That's unanimous.
Yeah, I think that's probably the best solution at the moment, and then we can take it further and see what happens in the future. So I'm sorry about that, and I'm sorry to the public speakers, but this was such a late bit of information, and we did wonder if we could go ahead, but we took advice from the officers, and it would be unsafe, if not illegal, to go ahead, so with an approval or certainly it's safer if we defer. So thank you very much indeed, officers. Thank you, members, and thank you, members of the public.